My name is Scott Sherwood. I'm an attorney in Panhandle. And we're part of this team that Joe Lovell's going to explain to you here in a little bit. But my partner and I, Joe Sherwood, we've been working on fire cases since 2006. Joe's been working longer than that, but he contacted us and we're part of that team. And I'm going to let Joe speak to it.
Okay. Thank you, Scott. My name's Joe Lovell.
Are you from Dumas?
Yes. I'm originally from Dumas. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Did you know my dad?
Yeah.
Yeah, my dad, he just passed away last year, actually.
Oh, yeah.
That's right. Yes, sir. Anyway, born and raised in Dumas and educated at Texas Tech twice. Came back up here, practiced law in Amarillo. I've been handling fire cases. So I think I tried my first one, I think it was 2000. It was 1996 Paint Ranch Fire. Anyway, ever since then, it burns up here, not as often as it has been lately, but it burns up here. So I've been working on fire cases since that time, particularly starting in 2006 with the big fires we had up here that you'll remember.
Yeah.
And I was involved in those, and actually so was Scott Sherwood. I knew Scott before that, but he actually was working on the dark side at the time, representing Cano Petroleum, who was the defendant in that case in the North Plains Fire. Anyway, we worked against each other during that and came to know one another. But Scott came around and ever since then, he's been representing ranchers and homeowners and that kind of thing in these fires. So I've been doing fire cases ever since then here, as well as more recently in the 2022 fires in New Mexico. I ended up representing folks out of Rodoso and up in that Hermans Peak Fire. And then we had this big one, Smokehouse Creek, 687 Reamer, Windy Deuce. I saw what was happening, how big the scale of this catastrophe was. And I knew we needed to put together a team because there were going to be many, 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 many people affected. We did our investigation quick, found out that these were going to be liability situations. It's not lightning or cigarette butt on the side of the highway, anything like that. But in the case of Smokehouse and 687 Reamer, they were utility caused XL SPS. And in the case of the Fire at Fritch, the Windy Deuce, that was oil field, which I'm used to. Anyway, I saw what was happening and knew it was going to be big and we were going to need a team. And a team not only with experienced lawyers up here, but lawyers experienced in this kind of litigation with, that's going to involve lots and lots and lots of people who have claims against utility companies. And it's going to require a lot of resources to take on the utility companies for lots of people with claims. So I started putting together a team. That was me that did that. And I called my friend Scott Sherwood, who just introduced himself from Panhandle. Scott, like I said, we've known each other for years and years, over 30 years, practicing up here in the Panhandle. Scott's got a partner here, Joe Sherwood, his son and legal partner, who's a crackerjack young lawyer and really brings a lot to the team. I've got a partner, Chris Hoffman. He's not here right at this moment. He stayed, we had a town hall up in Canadian a while ago, and he stayed back to talk to some people there. But he may be showing up here, an associate, Hannah Rivera. But then because of the size and the scope of this and the necessary resources and experience, I also called somebody else, Michael Watts, who's right over here. He's going to speak to you here in a minute. Michael, came to know Michael years ago through lawyers organizations. But then I brought him into a case from Amarillo, rising, interestingly enough, he'll touch on this a little bit more, arising out of the construction of the XL SPS headquarters in Amarillo a few years back. Anyway, it was a horrific catastrophic situation that was going to have lots and lots of defendants and require lots of resources. And I knew that my little firm was going to need help. And so I went out looking for who would be the best help for that, and I landed on Michael Watts here. And so we worked together in that case for Keith Garrison. We did a really good job for Keith and his family. And so I came to know Michael real well in those years that we worked together. So, and Michael, as he'll talk about more, Michael, he has handled more wildfire cases than anybody, I guess in the world. And he'll talk more about it, but he represented all those tens of thousands of people up and down the West Coast, the PG&E fires. You may have heard about some of that litigation. One in particular, a great, big, huge one, that Michael negotiated a $13.5 billion settlement for the people involved in that one. Anyway, so I called Michael, got Michael on the team right away. I'm glad he's here. He brings a whole lot to this that's just not available anywhere else. Anyway, Michael, I'll introduce you, Michael, and let you go ahead and start telling about what we've done and what we're going to do.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for coming. The...
You know, I've always heard that that fire started at Stenette, but where did it start?
Well, I'm going to show you about a mile north of Stenette. We know exactly where it started. And let me just kind of take you through the details of it. You know, we started off, as Joe mentioned, he had a neighbor, I think, called him. And he called me the day after the fire and he said, hey, have you heard about this? I do a lot of wildfire cases, so I got on the internet. And I feel kind of stupid because I told him, well, it doesn't look like that big of a deal. And he goes, give it time. It's pretty windy up here. And I flew to Maui to work on that fire for a couple of days. And by the time I got back, it was a million acres gone. And so we've been working on it ever since. And first thing I want to say is Joe knows what he's doing. You know, he's done wildfire cases a long time. Scott's one of the best lawyers up here in Panhandle. And I told him they didn't really need me, but I was proud to, you know, to be added to it. I've done these cases up and down the West Coast for a long time, but it's nice to finally get to do one in the state of Texas. And so I got my brother who's involved. He's the good-looking guy with all the hair. And then there's a guy named Joe, Jerry White, who's one of my partners. Jerry is not here because he's working on a case we've got in Los Angeles, a wildfire case that literally starts trial next month. And so that's going to be our team. And as Keith, I mean, as Joe said, we started working on a case involving Keith Garrison, who was a welder's helper that got burned in an electrical arc flash while they were building the SPS building. And so we did that case and had a good result and got to know each other real well. I've been a lawyer for 34, 35 years. A clerk for the Texas Supreme Court. Been doing big-time wildfire litigation for a good time. And I come here from my ranch in Mountain Home, Texas. And so when I see what it did to the ranches up here, it really hits home. And it just infuriates me because these places are our home. It's where our roots are and this didn't need to happen. And so when I got called by Joe, the first thing we did, that's my son, he got married last month, or last week, rather. But the first thing we did is we started looking about, we're looking for the cause of the wildfire. And I've done 19 of these across the Western United States. And they fall into very distinct categories about what's causing this. But a lot of these wildfires are caused by just silly utility things that should never happen. So the first thing that I did is I got on the internet, looked at the fires. There were five of them up here that day primarily. And the Smokehouse Creek Fire is the one that we'll start talking about first. And it's really not rocket science what we do. I mean, we figure out which way the wind is blowing and then go to the point of origin. And so it's pretty evident the wind was blowing from west to east. So we went all the way to the east and we've got all these databases that show us. And we started looking about a mile north of Stenette. And that's where all the warning signs were that this thing got ignited. And so then we've got all these databases so that we can in effect look down because we're looking for ignition sources. And the only ignition source that existed in the general area where we knew the fire had to have started was a utility line for XL. And so we dug in there and we started looking at that. And the next thing you know, we put people out there and there's a pole down right where we know from the burn pattern that the fire started. So we filed a lawsuit on behalf of a woman that had called us. I know the lawyers representing XL. So they had to tell us that they wanted to remove the pole and the portion of the pole that hadn't snapped down. So we put people out there and photographically grabbed the evidence, if you will. We learned a lot. And here's the pole removal process that we were at. And we got to photograph the pole that fell. And the bottom line is this is a beat-up old pole that's got all sorts of degradation. And even worse, the pole inspection contractor for XL was a company called Osmos. And we see that Osmos had been out there, that little silver coin is an Osmos stamp that they pin into these poles when they inspect them. And they had inspected this pole in 2024 prior to the fire. And in legal parlance, that's the closest thing to a smoking gun you can have. They knew this was a bad pole. How do we know that? You see the red sign just to the left? That is something that Osmos puts up, and it's a signal to people working for the utility, don't climb this pole. It lacks the structural rigidity to hold a man's weight. And it's also a signal to XL that you need to replace the pole. So that's the very warning sign that this pole needs to be replaced so it doesn't snap or blow over in the wind. Interestingly, I've got experience with Osmos. I literally flew here from Maui on an all-night flight. And this is a pole that fell over that started the fire in Maui in August of 2023, killed 102 people. It's pole 7A on the Hina Lulun Road. And you see those same Osmos pins where they had twice looked at it. And literally on Friday night, we're here on a Sunday, I was talking to the families of 28 people who burned alive in that fire. And when I told them it had happened again in the Texas Panhandle, they were just infuriated. And I don't blame them. And so part of what we're doing is pursuing this litigation so that we can prevent this kind of thing from happening again. But as we look at the pole, it's not in good shape. We've got good photographs from Joe Lovell's people that shows there's high degree of degradation or just rot in effect. And that's why the pole snapped where it did. And so we've got all that evidence pinned down because we got started very quickly, which is a good thing. It's also good, here in the state of Texas, we have the Texas A&amp;M Forestry Department that investigates fires here. In California, these things take up to a year to get a report back. The good Aggies here in the state of Texas got us a report very quickly. And they completely confirmed that everything that we had seen. And as you look at this report, basically what they do is they go through and they're trying to deselect things like arson and campfires and industrial equipment. And, you know, all the different things that could start a fire. And they went through and ruled them all out with the exception of power lines. And so they included it as the only cause. And they said, look, it ran right through the area of Orget, which is what we had found. The pole appeared to be decayed at the base, which is what we saw in photographs, and it snapped. And then, you know, the lines on the cross member fell in an easterly direction. And that's right at the start of the burn pattern. And that high voltage lines hits the ground where the fuel, the grasses that we use on our ranches to feed our cattle are. And it just burned towards the east from there, a million acres later, you know, we finally put out the fire. And so it's not real complex what happened. We know what happened to start the Smokehouse Creek Fire. And it feels good that we've got the official investigation body of the state of Texas, Texas A&amp;M Forestry Department agreeing with what our experts have shown. This led, I put a phone call into XL Energy's lawyer that I know well. And I literally asked him, how much insurance does Osmos have? Because they owe my clients a lot of money. And the next day, they put out this report that said, we acknowledge that our facilities appear to have been involved in the ignition of the Smokehouse Creek Fire. And that's true. They started the fire. They need to pay for it. One of the challenges is they've opened up this claims program. I've seen them do this before out in California. We think they're offering pennies on the dollar what these cases are worth. But more importantly, a lady at one of my previous meetings said, look, look at that letter. It says, we pay your claim or part of your claim, we reserve the right to take all or any part of your damaged property. So I'm just telling people, do what you want, but be careful what you sign. My experience is that's going to delay things. When we put litigation pressure on them, they tend to come clean with all the money they need to do. There's the claims. The other thing I wanted to do is I wanted to research XL Energy's and SPS's obligations under Texas law and Texas regulatory requirements to make sure that what we're seeing in these other states where we've had fires is the same. And you may remember there were some big fires in central Texas in 2010 and 11, Lockhart and the like. And that caused the legislature to cause the Public Utilities Commission of the state of Texas to make them, let's figure out how to avoid this. So they passed a rule, it's in section 2595 of the Administrative Code, requiring that utilities in effect publish grid hardening plans. What's grid hardening? That's basically making sure the stuff that's carrying your line doesn't fall over during a storm. And so it's storm hardening plans, and you have to do that every five years. And you have to say how it is that you're going to fortify your grid so that you don't have these kind of failures. And that was required beginning in 2011. Every five years means we've got three of these plans that have been published. And the good thing is they've got to get down to the level of the detail of which poles are they going to replace? Where are they going to replace them? When are they going to replace them? And what I saw in Hawaii is plans that said, we were going to replace the poles that eventually fell. But that replacement process got deferred as they were trying to hit profit targets so that they could pay dividends and the like. And so we'll see whether that happens here. But the bottom line is, is that we know that they have to, as a matter of law, submit to the Public Utilities Commission in Austin, plans about which poles they're going to do and how they're going to do it and the like. The next thing that we did is we wanted to be able to demonstrate to you that this was a hazard that XL has already understood exists. And they did. If you go to their website, for example, there's a lot of standards with respect to electrical installation and use. Poles are part of the distribution system of electricity. And so there's all these requirements. And they've got people whose job it is is to strictly be able to monitor the inspection and the replacement of poles because they know that those high voltage lines, if the pole falls over, that high voltage hits the ground. There's plenty of fuel in the form of, you know, grasses that we have that can start wildfires. And especially up here in the Texas Panhandle with the kind of winds we had today. If you start a fire, they're real hard to stop. And it's the reason that a million, 100,000 acres burned in the two days that I was working on the other case. The other part of their pole maintenance department is they have to figure out how they're going to contract the inspection and the maintenance of the poles. And this is where the interrelationship between XL and SPS as the owner of the lines and Osmos as the inspector of the lines comes in. Now, here in the state of Texas, the owner of the lines, XL and SPS, has a non-delegable duty to make sure that their structures are good. And they can't pass it off on a third party. But they all use third-party contractors, in this case, Osmos. And so they have responsibility if Osmos got it wrong. One of the things that they've been doing here in the Texas Panhandle is replacing a lot of poles that were aging and needed replacement. They obviously didn't get to this one. Across the entire grid, all the different states that XL is, they replaced about 3,000 poles in 2022. Our question is going to be, why didn't you get to this one by 2023 and the like? One of the reasons we think is, is they try to keep the cost of doing this down. And so we're going to have a big fight about whether you did the right thing or didn't do it in order to save money. But they're required to have wildfire mitigation plans. And this is to recognize the hazard that if utility equipment is starting a wildfire, we've got to stop that from happening to protect lives, home, property, and the threat of wildfire. And so they have to inspect thousands of lines, thousands of miles of these lines. And they've got to come up with a plan to replace the poles that need replacing and to do it in time to avoid these wildfires. These plans have to be submitted to the Public Utilities Commission, signed by the very top level of management. This is an example of one signed by the president, chief operating officer. And they've got to get it done because wildfire is now a year-round threat. We don't have seasonal fire system. You're in an area which is a high fire zone. Everybody understands it. The consequences of a fire starting up here is worse than other places because of the high winds that we've seen today. And so they've got to do all this. And they understand that they need to do all this. And so they've got wildfire mitigation programs. And they recognize the overall increase in risk and severity of the seasons. It's a year-long battle, so we've got to do what we can to minimize asset-caused wildfires. That's utility equipment-caused wildfires. So all these are things that they can do. And they need inspections to reduce the chance of causing ignitions. And so it's fine to have these programs with your system hardening programs and we're going to do this. But at the end of the day, it gets down to this slide. And that is, is that in high wildfire zones, they need to accelerate the inspections. And I'm here to tell you that in the middle of the Texas Panhandle, you run a high wildfire zone. So they needed to do inspections faster and they needed to replace the poles that pose an increased wildfire risk. So what happened to start this fire was not only foreseeable, as we lawyers say, it was actually foreseen and discussed in advance. And we see it over and over again about their need to remove equipment that may create the potential for incidents that could lead to a wildfire. The next thing that I wanted to do is to look and see what their contractors were saying about the need to keep an eye out on these poles. And there's three of them that I want to talk to you about. The first one was back a decade ago. A company called Geo Digital created a program that kind of told them how to prioritize pole maintenance and what we're going to do first, what we're going to do next and the like. And so we'll have to talk to these folks at Geo Digital. But the second group I'm going to want to talk to is the actual company that contracted the pole inspection in this instance. And that's Osmos. Osmos is a national company that they say there's 150 million wood poles in the US electrical grid. You've got to keep them going because without remedial treatment, they will decay. And when they decay, they lose strength, which affects safety. And the reason they decay is just, it makes sense. You've got wood, which is a food for fungus. And you apply moisture in the form of rain, heat in the form of Texas weather, and wind that pushes it all together. And you've got the perfect cocktail for decay fungi to thrive, food, moisture, air, and heat. And so now, more recently, the regulatory bodies have been placing an increasing emphasis on how are we going to keep these wooden poles from falling down in high winds that we know are coming? And so the third group I want to talk about is EPRI. And this is a new contractor that XL used. And they acknowledge that wood poles have a finite service life. They can fail both during catastrophic events and because of the loss of stressors, including insects and birds and fungus and the like. So these are all things they knew. They have something called the Transmission Asset Health Analytics System. It's designed to tell them where to start and where to go and the like. And everything we can see, we're in a high wildfire zone. We've got old poles. We're in an area with high winds. This should have been at the top of the list because the process of assessing pole health is essential according to their own service companies. And so EPRI was reached out to by XL. XL said they were going to use it, but they didn't get to this. So we'll have to talk to all those folks as well. So the bottom line is, is what happened that caused these fires that burned up all these properties, including yours, was something that was just predicted. Now, some of our friends over in Fritch were burned out by the Windy Deuce Fire. That's a slightly different fire from the standpoint of it's not a pole falling down. It's what we call a vegetation maintenance case where trees are allowed too close to the lines. And that interactivity between trees and the lines causes a spark. And so the Windy Deuce Fire, there's the line, there's all the trees that are banging up against it. That leads to arcing. We can see the damage to the line. And of course, it took out half the town of Fritch. Unfortunately, the Windy Deuce Fire was on a stretch of distribution line operated by Polaris. Operating, it's an oil and gas service company. And of course, the case against Polaris is now in bankruptcy. So we're going to have to file those cases as an administrative post-petition case in bankruptcy court. We're in effect, we're alleging what I've told you. And that is, you can't run a hot line through a bunch of trees because those trees are going to whack you. We do have a problem in that Polaris is not a very financially strong company. They have about $3 million in cash. They've got about $45 million in proven reserves and the like. But the reason they're in bankruptcy court is their expenses are higher than their income and they're basically in negative territory. We're down in bankruptcy court working on it. We're getting the access to the insurance and the like. But it doesn't stop there because there are arguments that have existed for 15 years that in super-high-wind event days, that perhaps the utility company ought to cut the power off in what's called a public safety power shut-off, PSPS. In fact, some of you got notice from the utility, I think for today, because we were in a high-wind event, that they may have to shut the power off. I'm not sure they did, but that's certainly part of their arsenal of things that they know to do in high-wind events. So we'll have a lot of discussion with XL about that. I'm working with a group out of Whisker Labs is what they're called. And they've got a series of hundreds of thousands of sensors along the lines. And those sensors send a signal that says if there's faults, tells them something's wrong. And at least preliminarily, in discussions I've had with these folks on March 6th, and I'm going to follow up on the 26th, they've already identified faults that existed between northern Amarillo and Dumas, which is in the general area where the Windy Deuce Fire started. It showed that they had faults that should have suggested to the utility that perhaps they wanted to shut the power off. We're going to spend a bunch of money analyzing that so we can help the folks that were burned out a house and home in Fritch. And so that's what we know about the Windy Deuce Fire. The 687 Reamer is just like the Smokehouse Creek Fire. It was started by a tree. There's the, I mean, by the pole that fell off. It was an old, unsafe XL SPS pole. We've got it photographed. We've got people out there. We know where the fire, how it started, where the arcing occurred. And again, some degree of comfort, the folks at Texas A&amp;M Forest Service have backed us up on this. In effect, the investigator, as I got closer to the power poles, I noticed a line was broken and hanging down. I examined the power pole that was down and noticed that the base where it broke, it was splintered and not charred. Examined the line on the ground. It had frays in the line that you saw in the photographs that we talked about. So it's a classic pole failure resulting in the 687 Reamer that killed somebody who's since filed a lawsuit. Now, the Grapevine Creek Fire, again, this is slightly different. You had some loose conduit that wasn't properly attached to the pole. And that blew into the phase lines. It caused sparking. The Texas A&amp;M Forest Service folks have backed us up on that. And the bottom line is, there should have been brackets attaching that conduit to the pole so it wasn't whacking around in the wind. And that led to the Grapevine Creek Fire. Joe Lovell, my partner in this case, has sent what's called document preservation letters to the defendants, asking them to produce all the electronic, the emails, all of the stuff. And it's a five-page letter, so I won't take you through it. But we've already preserved that evidence. And we feel like we've got a real good handle on what caused each of the fires. And we don't think we're guessing. And I want you all to know that because it's important to me. Most of us have never filed a lawsuit in our life. And I want you to know that this is righteous litigation. We're not guessing. We know what caused these fires and we know who's responsible for it and why. Now, there are two parts to the burden of proof in a lawsuit. You have liability, who done it? Did that cause damage? And I think I've shown you, we can prove that. But the second part is, what is the damage? And we have the burden of proof to prove what your damages are in order to make them pay it. So a lot of what we'll do has to do with getting through the line, figuring out the information we have to supply so that they'll pay the cases. We filed, I think, the first case, it's called Melanie McQuitty versus XL Energy Services, Southwest Public Service Company and Osmos. And the reason we filed that is so that they would have to get in touch with us before they started moving evidence around. And that worked out well. So we were able to, in effect, file the lawsuit, make the conclusions. We publicly announced those conclusions in the press so that they would have to acknowledge their responsibility. And they did that. We got a bunch of other lawsuits filed by other fine law firms, which is fine. But that can slow things down. So I filed a petition a few Fridays ago, what's called a motion for pre-trial coordination under the Texas MDL statute. MDL is multi- MDL is multi-district litigation. That's when you have similar cases, same facts filed in different counties. And here we have six different counties that were burned by the Smokehouse Creek alone. It's more efficient to put them together into one case for purposes of pre-trial so that the discovery is done one time. Uh, I just settled a case out in Oregon for $550 million and I took the deposition to the Chief Executive Officer of Pacific Corps. He's now the former Chief Executive Officer of Pacific Corps. He didn't do too well, but, but, uh, the point is, is that the, the MDL statute is designed so that that CE only gets to pose once. And you can use it in all the cases when they go to trial. Instead of everybody trying to take the deposition, it just takes up time. So we moved for this pre-trial coordination in order to move this process along and we did that on March the 8th. Um, the other thing we're doing is we're spending a lot of time talking to our class, collecting photographs. On the top line, you see a bunch of what I call fire progression photographs. If you have photographs during the fire that shows where it was, the good thing is, is that there is, you know, a nice, uh, little chip somewhere in these phones that says when you take the picture, it says what time you took it and it gives me a longitude latitude of where the camera was when it was taken. So I can take that together with all these pictures and kind of reconstruct the progression of the fire. And that can be important in some of these cases, particularly over here near Stanet, where you had the 687 Reamer kind of catch up to and merge with the Smokehouse Creek Fire. And we may have to resolve some disputes about fire progression as to why XL was responsible for this or the other. The, the second batch is photographs taken from the road. If you have those, we want them for a different reason. It, it'll show progression, but it'll also show that your camera was in the vicinity of the firing. And why is that important? There are elements of damages that Texas recognizes only if you can prove that you were in the quote "zone of danger" close quote, near the fire. If you've got pictures that you took right next to the fire as you're making your escape, you can prove that. So we collect those. And then lastly, we've got a lot of heroes that are out here, you know, fighting these fires. If you've got pictures of that process, I think it's good for us to have those as well. And then we go to damages. What do we do with respect to each of our clients? We use a lot of satellite imagery and we start off with something called Landsat Satellite, infrared analysis, both before and after the fire. Uh, this allows us to set what the burn zones are and follow that. So we look at a lot of the imagery from the satellites. In rural cases involving ranch fires, this is particularly important because we need to be able to view the vegetation type for the losses to assist us in analyzing how long those losses will take place. One of the big scrums that's going to happen is they're going to say, this is just like we gave you a free controlled burn, which of course is nonsense because controlled burns are, are controlled for a reason. They eliminate or they limit the amount of fuel. You keep the temperatures low and it allows the grass to come back up. Here we have an out-of-control wildfire that burned a million acres. Some of the temperatures are in excess of 3,000 degrees and that burns up the root system, which means that the stuff that comes back looking green is really a bunch of sticker bird that the cattle can't eat. And so we're going to have a dispute as to whether the damages were a year or two, like they'll say, or three or four or five, like we'll say. And we need to be able to prove that. So we use this satellite imagery to assess the land type for purposes of this debate that we're going to have about how long it's going to last. And so we look at soil characteristics, uh, that can be impacted by the fire intensity and we need to be able to prove that through imagery. So in addition to satellite imagery, we take aerial images. Uh, the reason we do that is it helps us a lot with respect to fire progression. Uh, here's a picture of Canadian. That tells me what part's been burned at the time of this picture, which way the wind is going, the progression of the fire and the like. And then we get drones. The drones are primarily to document the damage in your case. We get the camera, it goes up, uh, it's taking video. And what does that do? It creates images like this. This drone image allows me, before all this stuff gets moved out, to know how many different vehicles were involved, which structures were involved, what part was burned, what wasn't, because all this is going to look very different six months from now, right? And so we want to document that evidence. And then we make site visits to each property. And the reason we do that is, is, you know, as we go through the generations, the inheritance, the sales, the this or that, we've got to make sure that the thing we're looking at is actually your property. And so we use something called Landglide software where we do a site evaluation by the parcel. Uh, and this makes certain that we're going to be able to identify the parcel legally, that we've got the correct owner and the like. And we cross-reference out with all the county plot maps to make sure that we're doing it right. And so we do that. And then we backcheck it against the imagery of all the parcels and the boundaries and the like. And that allows us to make sure that legally we're doing your case and not your neighbors or vice versa. Now, after we do that, we do in-person interviews, especially on the ranches. And the reason for that, I mean, I come from a ranch, you know, we've got all sorts of bells and whistles on it and like that. Nobody knows that ranch like me and my ranch boy, right? And so if somebody that says they're a wildfire expert doesn't take the time to come to your place, they're going to miss out on a lot of different things that are components of your damages. To give you an example, fencing, water tanks, windmills, gates, bridges, barns, building power lines, irrigation pivots, uh, water lines, particularly of those of you all that have property along gorges and rivers, there's different stuff down there that we need to know about. And so we need to come interview you. And then that helps us assess livestock issues that are particularly acute in these fires from the standpoint of cow calf production interruption, restocking supply, restocking costs, grazing interruptions for months, which is what they'll say. Years is what we'll say, depending upon what was burned and how. Hay and feed access, you know, the good people of Texas have been shipping a lot of stuff up here. I know because the fire department where my ranch is donated, we all donated a bunch of hay to get it in trucks to get it up here. But eventually the people back home where they're from are going to need their hay to feed their own cattle, it's going to stop. And so we need to, to deal with that. Uh, there's a lot of cattle that have been put down because of the equivalent of COPD. They're, they're breathing that superheated air and it affects their ability to breathe other livestock injuries. And then lastly, we'll do on-the-ground photography, uh, in order to show the damages that was caused. And here we can see the buildings that were burned, uh, but we'll also look at all the vehicles and in ranches, the equipment, super expensive. Uh, someday I want to own John Deere because I spent enough money there, I should own it. You know, when all that stuff gets burned, it's got to be replaced, it's very expensive and the like. We need to count and document the condition of your livestock. If you're on the left, we know how many there are. If you're on the right, we know how many went down. Uh, I tell people, just photograph things and then get on with your life from the standpoint of, don't wait, uh, to, you know, I don't want a bunch of cows sitting on my property that are dead. Uh, let's get them out of there, but photograph it before you do that. Uh, the, the photograph on the left is really what I'm talking about. And when Joe and I were driving from Canadian to here, you see a bunch of this burned-up root system. This is what we see in uncontrolled fires, not controlled burns, but uncontrolled fires, which basically take out the root system. So you're not going to get the healthy, nourishing vegetation that, that the cows eat. You're going to get this weedy, stickery mess that's going to take a lot longer for it to replenish itself. Now, having done 19 wildfires before this one, my firm has developed kind of a proprietary software that we use. We run a paperless office. Everything you give us, we scan in and we put into a database for you. But at its core, it breaks down into six or seven categories. Home and vehicles, personal property, all the contents and stuff in your house and stuff that went down with it. Trees and outdoors, the cost of replacing all that. God forbid you're one of the injuries or the deaths. We hope not. Businesses, lost income, lost profits and the like. And then we throw all the pictures into a category we call general liability because we need the photos. Uh, this, this database, uh, is kind of slick, but it's what experience over 15, 16, 17, 18 fires has taught us is needed every time. And so we keep getting that information, we put it into the database, we prove all that out. Some of the cool things that we've developed is, you know, when you tell somebody whose house burned down, hey, tell me everything that was in it. We'll try doing that without some help cheating. And so what we've done is we've developed a, a series of visual prompts and we go room by room. And on the top, you can see something as ridiculous as a griddle in your kitchen. Now, I didn't know this, but there are 22 kinds of griddles for sale on the open market. You couldn't tell me what kind of griddle you had until I show you a picture of it. You say that one. And then we, in effect, get insurance providers to use the equivalent of eBay that will tell me how much it costs to replace that griddle. And we do it over and over again, room by room, dining room, living room and the like, all the bedrooms, the things in the bathrooms you normally see. And we reconstruct stem to stern, everything that was in the house. And it adds up to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. And many of you are tragically underinsured where this stuff has got an artificial cap on it and our system allows us to recover the total. The other thing we do is we use Google Earth. Uh, this is a photograph of the house on the cul-de-sac after a fire in California. But when you take the same image six months before, you can see all sorts of stuff that was there before. Uh, for example, we're able to use a laser to show 66 feet of shrubs, which in Santa Rosa, California, costs $28 a foot to replace. So all that goes into an Excel spreadsheet. And literally, from everything outside your home that has value and costs money to replace, we'll put it into an Excel spreadsheet and it adds up to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars for which we can prove loss. So this is part of our protocol. We put all that into a valuation summary. And the idea is to create an economic analysis that develops a monetary framework for you to achieve recovery, uh, in settlement. So we calculate losses to your structure, your infrastructure, your soil and your range, livestock, future damages and the like. And all of that keeps getting put into a database until we get it complete, where we know we've done everything you need and you are now settlement ready. We send those packets to the lawyers representing the utilities. They analyze them. We have a back and forth. We fill in any holes that they identify and then we start talking about how much they should pay you. Part of that process, and what I think my firm is particularly good at, having done this 20,000 times now, is we know what the utility companies have to have in order to start writing checks. And so we have a protocol that meets all those have-to-haves. Uh, the gentleman that will be negotiating this case is from a New York law firm called Crevath. And, and we, we are in the process of settling cases with him and other fires right now. So we know what they need and we're not guessing. And that kind of makes it more efficient. So who we are is three sets of lawyers, some local folks that you can trust and hopefully you've heard from me. And we've got the experience to do this over and over again. We think that, uh, we are ready, willing, and able to do a good job on your behalf. We've got the most experienced in fire litigation. As Joe said, I've represented more wildfire survivors than any lawyer in the world. It's true. Uh, it's over 20,000 people. Uh, we've achieved big results for those clients. Uh, Joe mentioned the 13 and a half billion dollars that we settled with PG&E, uh, 550 million last December with Pacific Corps. Negotiated something with Southern California Edison this month and, and because we know how to do this and we know what we're doing. Uh, so we've settled a bunch of cases for a bunch of folks and that experience makes us a little different from the standpoint of, we're not one of these folks putting an ad on, you know, Instagram, trying to become a wildfire lawyer. We're, you know, a guy that's done a bunch of open heart surgery, this isn't our first. Uh, and I think that's going to be important. So our process helps you and, and so we think we've got the experts who are already on the ground here in the Texas Panhandle. Uh, we've got staff in the form of two law firms here that are on the ground. My firm comes and goes, but we're here at full-time and we're ready to go. Now, there's a notebook that each of you were given. Let me just show you just real briefly what's in it.
Before you get into that, can I touch on something?
Go ahead.
Just, um, since what he was just now talking about, um, the, the lawyers have come out of the woodwork and particularly on social media, they're just everywhere. And, uh, all I want to say about that is be careful what you click and know what you're clicking so you're not binding yourself into something you hadn't agreed or you don't want to do. I mean, we've come here, Scott, Joe and I, and my partner Chris Hoffman back there, we are here and we're happy to answer the phone and talk with you and we don't mind coming and looking you in the eye. Uh, be careful what you click on is, is just what I want to tell you. Uh, you know, you need to make up your own mind about what you want to do about your claims, but it can be pretty tricky on clicking on things on the internet or Facebook or what have you. Uh, we just had, he, he may have mentioned while I was back there, we just had a lady in Canadian told us, showed us, uh, some law firm out of Houston that just called her out of the blue, uh, which is not the right thing to do. You're not supposed to do that. Uh, but they're out there everywhere, so just be careful. And I'm sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
No worries. So inside this notebook that you've got, there's three or four things I want to talk to you about. The, the first one is, we kind of put a little cheat sheet with photographs of what happened on each of these fires. It's not lost on me that most people have never filed a lawsuit in their life and we all know lawyer jokes and the like. I, I want you to feel good about this, that we're not guessing. Uh, this isn't people splashing McDonald's coffee around a courtroom or claiming X or Y or this or that. This is something, we know what happened, we know they're at fault and why. The, the second thing right behind the pictures is what's called a contract of employment and consent to fee sharing. Now, the reason we have that is we lawyers have to follow the ethical rules of the state of Texas. And one of the rules is we can't do legal work for somebody that hadn't hired us in writing. And so this is the writing. And I tell people, always watch out for, for law firms to come in with 20-page contracts full of Latin to show you how smart they are. It's just nonsense. If, if we can't figure out what our deal is in one page, it's not worth it. Uh, there are seven paragraphs. Let me just take you through that real quick. Paragraph one, right behind the pictures, basically says that you would be hiring us and authorizing us to be your lawyers. We'd file a lawsuit on your behalf, we'd make the claims and the like. Paragraph two says you're going to cooperate with us. Now, I think you can see, we already know what caused these fires. What we don't know is what your damages were and I can't prove up your damages if you don't help us, if you don't return the calls, if you don't get us the information we need. Paragraph three is the fee. I tell people in wildfire litigation, beware of somebody offering to do this by the hour. There's no check on them, just billing you and billing you and billing you. Here, we don't get paid unless we win. Um, it's what's called a contingency fee. Beware of people charging you 50% like I've seen in California or 40%. The, the standard rate is one-third. And, uh, the idea is you align the lawyer's interest with the client. The more we get you, the better we do. Uh, and that's very typical. Uh, there are three law firms involved in our group. The ethical rules say we have to tell you how we're splitting up that fee. Doesn't cost you more to have three of us than one. It's one-third for us. And we split that 50% to my firm, 25% to Joe, 25% to the Sherwood firm, only because I'm covering the banking part of it. I'm putting up the money for the experts and the like, and we'll get paid back at the end of the case. Uh, the way we get paid back is we monitor the expenses in paragraph four. Uh, because of the number of cases that I do, we've got a lot of buying power. I, I have the ability to get experts to come down here and stay for months on end because they know we're going to represent a bunch of people and they do it for cheaper, which is good. Um, and the other thing that we're able to do is, is because of experience, we're not guessing, we're not calling experts that have never done this before. Usually the expenses in these cases are two, three, four, five percent tops. Uh, the case I just settled in Southern California, we're at about 1%. But you can count on, because we're borrowing money from a bank on your behalf to pay those expenses that you pay back, only if we win. Uh, but, you know, you're going to collect 65 cents on the dollar, hopefully a bit, a little bit more, but generally around that, it's our history. Uh, we're able to keep those costs low because we represent a lot of people at once. We already represent a lot of people. And so you get the economies of scale. Uh, the, the guy that's going to come down and do these analyses, he doesn't fly down for each one and charge everybody a plane flight. He comes down once and stays for months and months and months. He's been in New Mexico for over a year, just finished it up. Uh, as, as I tell the joke, he had a Hawaiian shirt and a Lual, you know, a lei on his shirt thinking he was going to Maui. And I said, no sir, you know, you're going to the Texas Panhandle. He's a guy that went to East Texas State University and Texas A&amp;M got his masters. I said, you're better spent in, in the Texas Panhandle. And he was here and he's already here and he'll be here for months. Uh, but he'll be doing it in a very efficient way that makes sense. Uh, so those economies of scale are super important. But paragraph five is part of that, multiple clients. The way we achieve economies of scale is representing a whole lot of people at once so we can push them through a process that's very efficient. But you have to authorize that. The ethical rules say I have to tell you that I'm representing more than one, and I am, we already represent hundreds of folks, we represent thousands. I represented 16,000 people at once in Northern California. And we were set up to do that, we've got the resources and the like, because we're trying to achieve those economies of scale. You're allowed to do that if you tell the client that you're going to do it and get their authority. So I'm telling you, we're representing a lot of people and that's good for you. You're authorizing that so that you can achieve the economies of scale. That's what paragraph five says. Paragraph six is just a personal pet peeve of mine. You're going to see ads from a lot of out-of-town lawyers, a lot of out-of-state lawyers. And a lot of them have contracts saying, if we get into a quarrel with you, you've got to come to California to sue me. Or you've got to give up your right to sue me and like that. I've never thought that was fair. Here, we fix venue right here in the Texas Panhandle. If you've got a dispute with me, sue me here. You won't because we do the right thing. But watch out for people trying to slip in a venue provision on you out of state. And the last one just says we did this right. We're sitting here in a public place, we're allowed to put an ad in the paper, invite you to a public meeting so you can ask questions, make the decision you want. We're not allowed to knock on your door, we're not allowed to call you like that lady said. And so by signing this, you're acknowledging that we did this the right way. If you go to page two, a couple of things. If you sign the document, I'm going to want your email and your cellphone. And I know that sounds weird, but let me tell you why. I've learned that about 20% of the regular mail that gets sent gets lost, particularly in cases where people are burned out of house at home, moved into a temporary spot and the like. Your phone goes with you. So if I send you a text, I can send you a video update, I can send you a short text, I won't be texting you for nothing. If you've got your email address, I can email you that, it's free. You get it immediately, it's set away in seven or eight days. And we're pretty good at updating our clients. We need the names and dates of birth of everybody that was in the house if it burned down. And then the stuff on the right side is basically questionnaires, it's kind of a get started about what the contents were that were in the house, where's the burn place that we're going to go to so that John Brown knows where to go and the like. And so these are all things that we do, we think we're pretty good at it. We've been up here three Sundays in a row because I wanted to meet people personally. I've lived in Texas all my life, I understand the ethos here. And we're excited to help people and to help you get your homes back. There are communities throughout Oregon and California that are either completely rebuilt or watching homes being framed up right now with settlement monies that we got. And that feels good. When this kind of litigation is done right, people get to rebuild, ranches get to start up again. When it's done wrong, you have regional recessions. And so I'm very wary about this kind of litigation being handled by people who know how to do it. And I think that most people would agree that we do. So thanks for coming. Any questions I can answer for you?
Yeah. My house burnt down.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
And it had a basement in my pressure tank down there for my water. And they're supposed to come Tuesday and dig a hole and put me in there.
Good.
Should I go ahead?
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, remember when I said, don't let your lawsuit get in the way of your life? Photograph everything you can before Tuesday, so I got images of what it looked like before it got fixed and that's fine. Okay?
There's nothing salvageable in that house.
I know. But they're going to change the evidence when they come in and fix it. So just take some pictures before and some pictures after and that'll be good enough. But you've got to get your house fixed.
Well, I need water.
Of course you do. Do it Tuesday, don't wait on the lawsuit. But photograph before, photograph after. Okay?
And talking about, I tried to get ahold of XL Energy.
Yeah.
And the only thing that ever come up was lawyers.
Yeah.
I never did get ahold of XL Energy.
Yeah.
I never did find their...
They're going to...
But I never did communicate with them.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the bottom line is, is that, you know, when XL offers to do something, they're doing it for their shareholder. Our job is, we've got a fiduciary obligation to you and you're our only obligation. You know, so I tell people, you know, not saying you can't call XL and try to do the right thing, but generally these funds result in them flicking you a couple nickels, opening your bite so you get rid of your lawsuit. It takes some litigation pressure and some jury trials to put the pressure that we need. I've used some slides, you know, the amount of money that we get offered goes way up and we're running extra trial. And so part of our process is to get the files going, get them consolidated, get through this pre-trial process, get trials as fast as we can because that's when they pay us. Okay?
If I decide to go, you know, and I fill all this out, what I do with it.
So you see the address on the front, that's Joe Lovell's law firm. If you get to us and there's a phone, there should be a phone number on there as well, I think. Get it to us and then what happens is they'll scan it, goes into our database, we'll countersign it so that we've got a contract. And then, you know, our damages experts are already on the ground down here and we'll get them out to your place.
And I just mailed this whole thing back?
You can mail the whole thing back signed if you want and the like. Nita over here is the paralegal that takes care of all that, she'll open up a file for you and we'll get started. Okay? And I'm sure, sorry, you lost your home, it's not any fun.
Well, I don't live there, I live in Sunrise.
Yeah. Well, it's still yours and, you know...
I've spent a lot of time there.
You know, I was telling the group in Canadian earlier, my son got married last weekend on the highest stretch of my property. I looked at it, it was just beautiful and I was thinking about how pissed off I would be if some utility company burned down all those acres, you know? It's just, you know, it's your home. It just is, whether you live there or not, it's your property, it's part of who your core is.
You know, about a mile south of here, there's a little community, it's up on the hill.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of that burned, is that a different burn?
No, well, there's different fires, you know, there's the Smokehouse Creek Fire and then you've got the Windy Deuce Fire, so it depends and we can...
Was that a separate fire?
Yeah, yeah, there's four, five different fires, but we know what caused them all. So you tell me where the burn was and I can tell you which fire it was.
I believe, Mr. Dooley, what you're referring to is the 687 Reamer Fire, which he showed you up there, that's the one that started out there southwest of Stinet and then burned through the south side of Stinet. But it ended up merging with the Smokehouse Creek Fire a little further east.
Well, I saw that and I thought that was where the Smokehouse started.
The Smokehouse started up north, north of Stinet, about a mile over.
Yeah, I left the ranch that day and I was coming back and I could see that smoke where it started.
Yeah. Hey, so Mr. Dooley, I've got a question for you. You knew Joe when you walked in from Dumas, you got any good stories you can tell about him on tape?
No. No, I didn't know Joe, I knew his dad.
Well, every time somebody says they know Joe, I kind of tense up. I'm kidding, of course. You guys have any questions that we can answer? Yeah?
I'm just sitting with, you know, my barn got burnt down and a lot of equipment and poor vehicles.
Yeah.
And don't really know what to do. Like he was saying something about, they called me, a lawyer called me from Dallas. And so...
That's not supposed to happen. You know, lawyers aren't allowed to come knock on your door, they're not allowed to call you. So, you know, just beware of somebody doing that.
Well, one of the things, when I said beware of what you click, one of the things they're wanting you to click is something that says, I would like a lawyer to call. Okay? You may not realize that, but that's in there. And so that may be what they're doing, if you're clicking on there to get information, then they're saying, aha, you gave me permission to call. So whether it's lawyers or whether it's SPS, you know, we always tell our clients the same thing, and that is be very careful what you sign. Nowadays, it's even tougher because it's not just signing, it's just clicking on something. So just be careful.
What can you do about that?
Sorry?
If you sign your name on the phone?
Hey, well, if you did that with a lawyer, they may say, aha, we got a contract with you. I don't know.
You'll be all right, just be careful.
Is any of this activated, or is there a...
No.
No, sir.
We don't need a note to read. You know, now we will get some private information once we've established that attorney-client privilege where it's privileged. But for the start, you sign the contract, send it in, we'll sign it. Then that allows us, under the ethical rules, to start our work. And then people like Nita will be in touch with you to get more details and we'll keep going until we've got the whole thing proven up so that we can put the damages packet in front of XL to get you full payment. Okay?
I've never done anything like this.
Well, you know, I've been living in Texas for 56 years and I've never filed a lawsuit here either for myself. Most of us, and, you know, and I try to tell my wife that, most people, this is the very first time and the only time they'll ever be involved in litigation. But the good news is, I can tell you this, the right to do this is enshrined in our Constitution, it's in the Seventh Amendment, it's in the Bill of Rights. And while we all know lawyer jokes and some of them I would spit on if they were on fire, a lot of them do a lot of good. And I can tell you, having done wildfire litigation for a while, we're putting ourselves out of business. There are new technologies that this litigation pressure has created where the utilities out in Northern California, they're doing things that they hadn't even thought of in 2017 until we started suing them. And the problem is, is that there was so much litigation pressure in California that they changed their conduct, but up in Oregon, Arizona, New Mexico and Texas and obviously over in Hawaii, they didn't get the message. And so you're shooting fires there, but five years from now, hopefully this will be a thing of the past and you will have been part of the solution, making sure that it doesn't happen again, which is a good thing. Okay?
Will XL be paying for this and will they have insurance?
So both. XL does have insurance. We don't know how much yet, but typically these companies, the bigger ones carry a lot of insurance. And I mean, that's why they buy it, right? When they have a problem, that insurance helps take care of the liability. We lawyers, we buy malpractice insurance just in case something goes wrong, you know? And we want to cover our clients, same thing here. And, you know, the bottom line is, is that some of them carry enough insurance, some of them don't. You know, my case out in Hawaii with Hawaii Electric, they killed 100 people, they burned down 3,700 houses, they don't have enough insurance. Here, I think XL probably does. Okay? Anybody else?
I know we got some people from Windy Deuce. Did you all have any particular questions about that? Because that is a different animal. I know Michael talked about it a little bit, but it's a different situation, a lot harder situation, I think.
Well, we know what started it. We know that there were four faults in the line before that fire started that sent a signal to XL that there was a problem. And our claim is they should have shut the power off and that fire would have never happened. And I think we've got good evidence in terms of pre-ignition fault sensor data that says they should have shut it off. And several of the people that we've met with today have told us they got noticed because of the high winds, they may shut the power off today. Turned out they didn't need to do so, which is fine, but it's certainly in the arsenal of techniques that utility companies use all across America. In very rare weather, it only happens once, twice a year. But sometimes, you know, you'd rather shut the power off and cost somebody the ham in their fridge in their entire house. And that'll be the claim in the Windy Deuce fire. Okay? All right. Thanks for coming.
Do you have a question? Maybe you just mentioned insurance.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yes, that's, thank you.
So a lot of you pay premiums for homeowner's insurance and they're going to pay you for